Who may not be aware. Or may not know me. My name is Lee Levy and. I've been a member of the. Zoning Board of Appeals for seems like almost forever, but. I am chairman, beginning with tonight's meeting. And Danielle Samcheck is our new secretary. And like to remind everybody that. This meeting is being recorded. Those that wish to speak will have to raise your hand and be recognized. Those that are calling in. Tammy will help us deal with that. So with that, I'd like to ask Danielle to read the. The first item on the agenda.
Let's do our roll call first, please.
Oh, roll call.
Roll call.
I'm here. Andy is here. Tom Farkas, Danielle Samcheck. And who else do we have?
Is Ben with us?
I'm here.
And Ben is here. Thank you, Ben. Good evening. So that we do have a five-person quorum tonight, which will allow us to. Move this meeting forward. So. Danielle, if you would. Or maybe I should say. That based on our. Information, Tammy Maldonado. Item number two, three dash one, 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 six dash zero, one. Eleven Fountain Street has asked for continuance. And if there are no objections, we will proceed with. The second item on.
Well, we want, I'm sorry, we want to open the public hearing.
Oh.
We'd like to open it and then immediately ask for a continuance, or I'm asking.
I, I will get in the swing of this again.
No worries.
So Danielle, if you would read the first item. And then we will officially open it and then close it, asking for continuance.
Sure. Item two, three dash one, 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 six dash zero, one AG Real Estate. LLC variances for residential density and parking requirements for an existing nine-unit multifamily residence. Property located at eleven Fountain Street.
I think we have to read the entire.
The whole thing?
Yes.
There it is. Okay. Variances for residential density, six. One thousand, six hundred and fifty foot square foot lot per dwelling unit required. One thousand, one hundred and fifty-nine square foot. Lot area per dwelling unit proposed. Section one, one, eight dash five, one, zero, C parking. Twelve spaces required, nine proposed. Section one, one, eight dash. One, two, two, oh, C parking in the front setback. Thirty-five feet from centerline Cliff Street required, five feet proposed. Section one, one, eight dash one, two, two. Oh, J setback of parking driveways from a budding residential zone, twenty feet required. Ten point eight feet existing slash proposed. Section one, one, eight dash five, one, zero, D, one. And parking backup, twenty-four feet required, twenty-one proposed. Section one, one, eight dash one, two, three, zero, D, one. For an existing nine-unit multifamily residence in neighborhood business zone. Property located at eleven Fountain Street, District Two, Block Seventy, Lot Eighteen. Request. The applicant seeks variances to allow a total of nine residential units, five in the front building. And four in the rear building to remain on site. Zoning records indicate there should be a total of seven units, five in the front and two in the rear building. Background. A zoning verification letter was used to the current owner of the. Or owner's representative, Zachary Taylor, in April, twenty, twenty-three. The attached zoning letter addresses to him, notes the additional two units in the rear as illegal. Analysis and findings. Statute does not grandfather in number of dwelling units. At some point. In time, two additional dwelling units were created in the rear building without permits. While those units may provide affordable rent. And the current owner did not construct the units. The creation of those units. Are a self-created hardship in this case. The parcel simply does not meet the size requirements to support nine dwelling units and the parking requirements. Attachment, one zoning verification letter, April dated April thirteenth, twenty, twenty-three.
Thank you, Danielle. So this item is officially opened and we will. Move it forward.
Continue it. I move that we continue to the next meeting.
Oh, thank you, Andy. Will everyone raise their hand to signify their approval of delay? And it appears it is unanimous. The next item on the agenda. Two, three dash one, one dash one, two, two, one dash zero, one. Hyde Park Properties. Danielle, you're up again.
All right. I have to get these in the right order. Thirteen Longview. All right. Hyde Park Properties LLC, variances for lot area, six thousand square feet required for two-family. Five thousand, nine hundred and nine square feet existing slash proposed. And lot width, fifty feet required, sixteen point zero, one feet existing slash proposed. Section one, one, eight dash three, five, zero, C and special exception per section one, one, eight dash one, four, one, zero, A, two, E. For development of non-conforming lot under the same ownership as. An adjoining lot for proposed two-family residence in an existing dwelling in the C residence zone. Property located at thirteen Longview Court, District Five, Block Twenty-One, Lot Thirty-Six. Adjoining unimproved property at eleven Longview Court, District Five, Block Twenty-One, Lot Thirty-Nine. Request. The applicant seeks variance to legalize the two-family home and a special exception to unmerge two non-conforming lots under the same ownership. Background. Thirteen Longview Court contains a non-conforming two-family dwelling. While the tax assessor taxes properties based on what the parcel and structures contain, there is no history of zoning permits authorizing a two-family dwelling. Eleven Longview Court is the unimproved adjacent lot under the same ownership. Analysis and findings. Thirteen Longview is a non-conforming, is non-conforming in that it lacks the required fifty-foot frontage. Although the lot area meets the minimum five thousand square foot for a single-family dwelling, six thousand square feet is required for a two-family home. The adjacent property at eleven Longview was and is under the same ownership, merging the two lots per section one, one, eight dash eight, zero, zero, E, two. No hardship need be identified to grant a special exception to unmerge the lots. Staff concedes the strictest interpretation and application of the regulations regarding the frontage do pose a practical difficulty in this case, as the lot was created around nineteen fifty.
Okay. Will the representative for this item come forward? And identify themselves and begin your presentation?
Yes. Good evening. My name is Simon Stacke and I'm representing Hyde Park Properties. And Tammy, I don't know if you can get the first sight man up on the screen right away?
Yep, give me just one second, okay?
Yeah. So i- in the meantime, we bought this property. It's a house from early nineteen fifties. It's, you know, it was in terrible condition. It's clearly a two-family home. It has two electrical meters, two kitchens, et cetera. We are planning to just improve the conditions and renovate it and keep it as a two-family home. And you know, we think that would be in great addition to the neighborhood to fix it up. We are not asking to expand the home in any way. We are asking to. Get a special permission here for the variance of the frontage, which you will see shortly. Is it possible to zoom in there? There we go. A little bit more if possible. So. Thirteen Longview Court is the top one. We are also the owner of the bottom one there, eleven Longview Court. And the issue here is the frontage from the street of Longview Court, women have sixteen feet. So no matter what we do there, we can't really expand there. However, as Danielle was saying, we have the possibility to. Make this lot conformance when it comes to the size of six thousand square feet by moving the lot line. But in this case, we're asking to. Skip that step and get it approved as is. The plan for the future of Longview Court is to add another house there on that empty lot. If you skip, can you go to the next slide there? Possible?
You want the single property?
Yeah, yeah, the single. I want to explain the parking situation there. So these are the existing conditions that you were seeing there and I will show you where the. What we're proposing to be compliant when it comes to parking and actually make this into a two-family home. Thank you. Is it possible to zoom in that too?
Does it look all right?
This was actually the end of the one. This was the first one when the parking was outside the setbacks.
Oh, hang on.
Yeah. But the, the back parking lot will have, we will have three parking spots there in the back. The one that you see in the front will be adjusted.
Give me just a minute.
Yeah, where is it? I guess I can add to this. So this lot was. They made this lot in the early fifty, nineteen fifties before all these conditions came in. I don't know if it actually was co-compliant at that time, if, if the regulation was different, but. They definitely built their home as a two-family home and it's in a two-family residential zone.
When was this house built?
It's early nineteen fifties. I would say nineteen fifty-three. So I don't have the tax card in front of me, but.
The tax record said nineteen fifty.
Nineteen fifty.
Okay, I'm almost there. I'm sorry. Just bear with me.
So just to ask a question, this home was built on an original footprint? This doesn't look like a nineteen fifties home. This is the existing house?
Yeah, this is the existing house, yes.
I drove by it the other day. It looked awfully new. I mean, and also. Out of character with, I hasten to say, neighborhood. But.
Yeah, it's just. It has been repainted.
Okay, maybe.
Emergency windows that was put in. Other than that, it's the same footprint and.
Maybe instead of paint, painted the job, but yeah, it looked noticeably a beacon on that neighborhood, in that neighborhood.
All right, Simon has his luck.
Oh, much better. Yeah, so that will take care of the parking in, in the front to keep that within the setbacks there in the front. And we're proposing to have four parking spots here. We are proposing to, you know, the house didn't have, it doesn't have AC or anything like that. So we are proposing to install that later on here and remove the old propane tanks, use natural gas.
One thing that strikes me. How much of this surface is taken up by impervious cover? Drives, parking, houses, walkways, et cetera.
Hang on, it's, if you go up in the corner?
I can't see it.
No, no, hang on, I'll get.
Okay.
I'm just maneuvering on this little laptop, sorry. All right, can we read this?
You need to make it a little bigger.
Okay. How's that?
Much better.
So here's the coverage I'm highlighting with this cursor, the coverage calculation, Simon. And. All right, paving doesn't count towards in residential, it doesn't count towards lot coverage.
Doesn't.
Does not currently, currently.
So I could, I could pave my entire lot?
You would have issues with DPW doing that, but, but for. You'd, you'd need to provide call text. That's under the current regulations. The new regulations, which have recently been adopted, will change that. But those will not be effective until probably the middle of February.
Okay. Are you adding any landscaping to this site?
Eh. Yes, we will definitely, we don't have a landscape plan ready for it. It's actually, I don't know if you guys have been up there, but there are a lot of trees covering the grounds around there. Because it goes kind of steep down to the other neighbors. So those are already in place. We're going to put some, some bushes and other greenery around the house here. Any other questions? Yeah.
So basically. The main variance you're asking for is. For the.
Sixteen feet there of the front.
Yard setback width.
Yeah.
And the lot size.
And the lot size.
They're like a hundred square feet off of the lot size.
I'm lost. I'm looking at the December nineteenth letter. Are we dealing with thirteen Longview?
Yes.
Yeah.
You don't see the map on your screen?
The, the only thing I see on this letter deals with the merging of two lots. That's it.
Oh, you mean for the staff report?
I'm telling you what's on here. Nelson finding thirteen Longview is not conforming and it lacks the required fifty-foot frontage and then so on.
Yeah.
How, how do we get into all the rest of this stuff? Has there been a change in the last few days?
No, no, no. So in the, in the description of the variances required, so for a two-family, you technically need six thousand square feet. A single family only requires five thousand, but they're seeking to legalize the two families. So they're. Providing in the proposal, they will be providing for required parking spaces. There's not proposing any other alterations except for the entry steps and the AC units, which would be compliant. The question, the, the. The ownership of having the two lots. Brings them, we have to, we need to, like, the strictest interpretation means we need to unmerge those two lots. Alternatively, Simon mentioned he could do a lot line revision.
To get to six thousand.
Exactly. They still need it for the, for the lack of frontage. So, yeah.
Right. Again, I'm semi-lost. Not as lost as I was two minutes ago.
Sorry.
We are not duty-bound to agree to unmerge the two lots. So the current configuration, they don't have any problem, do they?
Yeah.
Is that correct, Tammy?
They're ninety-one square feet short of lot size to meet two-family.
Yeah, so. They don't have to do anything if we don't unmerge.
Well, you'd need to grant them a, no, you, you need to grant them a variance for ninety-one square feet of lot, of lot area required. They need six thousand required lot area for a two-family home. So you'd need a variance of ninety-one square feet and then they need the variance of the lack of the fifty feet frontage.
Right, right. But the frontage is not an issue really because we have the two lots merged.
Right.
If that, exactly, if you do it that way, yes, that's, it's a little bit tricky that way, but yes.
Right, this only becomes an issue if you want to sell the. Eleven.
Yeah, we would like to build a single-family home on eleven in the future. We think that would be very beneficial to have another home there. For, for this neighborhood.
How, how big is the lot at eleven?
Structure without merging the lots?
Tammy, do you mind just going back to the other side where you can see both the lots?
Yeah.
Can I interrupt a second? I think we have a cart-horse problem. We got to decide whether or not we would allow the unmerging of them, whatever argument they want to make to have us do that. And do that before we talk about everything else, so that we know what we're talking about.
Andy, your point's well taken.
Or, or, or you could just say you'll deal with ninety square feet. And, and leave it at that. I mean, this is, this has existed since nineteen fifty, this home. This two-family situation in this home has existed for. Seventy, close to seventy-five years. Is that what, what I'm led to believe? And we've just improved the home?
No, 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 no. It was a single-family originally. At some point, it morphed, not this, but somebody morphed it without benefit of permit into a two-family.
I see.
So tax, tax, whatever, tax will assess whatever is out on site, whether it's legally compliant or not.
Right, we know when that happened?
No, we don't know. The, the tax card shows it as a two-family home and we went back. Tam and I went back and looked at all the records and. There was some building records from the nineteen seventies and then. They did some electrical permits in there, I think nineteen nineties, but that's basically it. So we, we don't really know.
How many two-family houses are in this neighborhood?
There, it's, it's a zone that allows it. So I mean.
Okay.
I'm imagining there's multiple two-families, but I didn't do that analysis.
It's a dead, it's not a lot here. It's a dead-end street. Very short street.
Yeah, that's true.
Would be consistent for C-zone, though.
So I guess the applicant's argument is that they'd like to build another house. On the other piece of the land that is currently merged. And therefore they want us to unmerge it so they can do that, which has nothing to do with whatever we're dealing with on their current lot. That's a separate issue. I don't know anybody's made anything persuasive that says we should go that direction. And wouldn't some variances be required, Tammy?
So to build on the, so can everybody see the two-lot map?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so the, the. Correct, the, if you, well, they could do a single-family on number eleven as of right.
But not a two-family.
Correct.
Because they're short on square footage.
Right, they're not, for the lower lot, they're not proposing anything at this time. This was staff's and determination that this was sort of a necessary path. If you don't deem it to be necessary, that's fine too. Then we can just look at it on the. Strictly viewing it through the lens of thirteen Longview, but again, the, the, that law, that regulation that I cited, eight hundred E. It, it says when you've got two lots under the same ownership and there's a non-conformity on one or both of those lots. They're merged for that, just for that purpose. So because they don't have frontage. They don't have required frontage and they're tiny bit short on the lot area. That merges those two properties. Just for zoning purposes.
So taxes have been paid on the improved lot and the unimproved lot?
Yes.
Yes, two separate lots, yes.
Okay, just need to clarify.
Yeah, do you get two tax bills or just one?
I have to check with accountant about that, but I believe we are getting two tax bills, but.
Yeah, because it's emerged. I don't know why you would, but anyway.
Well, they're two, so for tax purposes, again, it goes to that, like, they tax sees it as a two-family. They're taxing them as a two-family. And they, because they have the parcel ID, that would tell me they're getting two separate tax bills. For eleven, eleven is parcel ID.
I don't know. I don't understand why that would happen because the assessor is the one. The statutes pertaining to that is what causes them to be merged. So I don't know why the heck you have two tax bills after you forced them to be merged.
That's because that hasn't happened yet, right?
I don't, I need.
They get merged if we vote not to grant the variance.
What was that then?
I said, they haven't been merged yet. They'll get, they'll get merged if we vote to not grant the variance, right?
They're, the way zoning staff has to review it, it's as if they're merged.
Okay, so you're kind of looking ahead as, as though they are.
It's, yeah, it's strictly.
For tax purposes, it hasn't happened yet.
Yeah, but, but we're only, we're only looking at thirteen now. Eleven is conjecture or hypothetical, right? There's nothing, you know, that we. We presume it could be a single-family home and it would comply if it's a family home, one single-family home down the road, but. It's not really in play here. Thirteen is what's, what's in play, right?
Yes, that's the only one that's in play.
Well, you know, I, I don't know about that.
Don't we have to vote to unmerge them?
And that's your primary interest, then we have to know what you want to do with the property and whether we have to therefore grant variances so you could actually build on it.
Well, if I may, can we look at it a different way? Because the, the only way I'm bringing up the eleven Longview Court is to say. Hey, I can make this compliant with the six thousand square feet. If necessary. But what I'm asking for is to get the variance for the ninety-three feet. And this, you know, the sixteen feet that I don't have, that has to be fifty in the front there.
Okay. Right.
Pretty sure I understand it. But I also want to make sure that. Nothing we do would allow eleven Longview to have. An illegal two-family house on. An even smaller piece of property. We just need to make that clear.
Yeah.
That would. Understood.
Yeah, by unmerging them or granting any variances for lot eleven, that doesn't authorize, I mean, sorry, for lot thirteen. Existing home that does not authorize the vacant lot to have a two-family if they need variances for lot size.
Yeah, they, they wouldn't get it. I mean, it's far short.
Right.
Kenny, future proposal for eleven would have to go back to staff for a review, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Right.
Wha- what are, what is the proposal if you wanted to steal the ninety-three square feet? Like, where would you draw the line?
Yeah, I don't know, Tammy, if you had that one that we looked at it, it would basically be what he's doing there.
I'm, yeah, I'm showing.
You just take that part, man, south.
Yeah, it will just be a weird shape for. When in the future we want to build a one-single-family home at eleven, it will be a weird shape on that house because of the setbacks, because it has to be on an angle, so it's.
You could have a jog in your six-foot side yard setback.
Yeah.
Any other questions, the board?
All good for me.
Is there? Is there any member of the public that wishes to speak in favor of this proposal?
So we have several attendees. I would just instruct you if you wanted to make comments for or against this application. Just use your raise your hand feature. If you're called in, you need to press star nine on your telephone to raise your hand and then star six to unmute. There are no raised hands.
Okay.
Wait, sorry, I have one more question.
Yep.
If you steal the area, does that make eleven long views frontage less than fifty?
But you don't need it fifty because eleven will always be a single family home, so.
Oh, okay.
That doesn't really affect it.
Okay.
It's the two family that gives us the required.
No, that's sorry, that's not accurate. He would, he already had a proposal where he would taper it. So he you just have to keep fifty feet for the first seventy feet back. Yeah, I, yeah, I think. Or sorry, you have to keep ninety percent of the lot width for the first seventy feet back. So that's why I was showing you that little wedge he planned to do, so.
Okay. All right, that makes more sense to me.
Hey, if we're all aware of that, that makes it a little bit easier. Any final questions? And we have nobody in the public. There is no need, Simon, to have any rebuttal. So I would close this item and we will discuss it at the end of the hearing. So on to item C on the agenda. Danielle?
Yep.
You're up.
Burwell, right?
Yes.
Okay. Andriel Kilborn and Alexander Simu- Simuwa. Sorry, variance to allow parking within the front setback, thirty feet front property line required. Nine foot, nine point five feet proposed. Section one one eight dash one two two zero J for two proposed parking spaces. And an existing single family residence in C. In C residence zone, property located at nineteen Burwell Street, District Five, Block eighty five B, Lot seventeen. Request, the applicant seeks variance to install an off-street parking pad at the existing home. Background, the single family home was built around nineteen hundred. There was no off-street parking requirement at that time. A short driveway does appear on aerial imagery, however, it does not appear on the nineteen seventy eight topographical map. That nineteen seventy eight topographical map has been the historic reference utilized by zoning staff for decades in determining existing legally nonconforming driveways. Analysis and findings, a zoning permit was issued in October twenty twenty three for alterations and renovations to the home. At that time, it was noted that the parking would need to be made compliant by either removing the driveway or extending the driveway southerly to provide a zoning compliant parking space behind the front setback. A driveway is a use rather than a structure and does not become grandfathered by statute. Staff acknowledges some practical difficulty related to the existing site conditions and the proximity of coastal resources as outlined in the attached coastal site review memo from land use planner Amelia Williams. However, the proposed parking pad is rather large. It is not a zoning requirement that two parking spaces must be provided. The board could consider a reduction in size of the proposed parking pad. Attachment one coastal site plan memo from Amelia Wilma- Williams Land Use Planner. Should I read the memo or?
You may, certainly.
Upon review of our records and maps, it appears that the property at nineteen Borough Street directly abuts coastal waters. The closest point of disturbance is the proposed driveway extension about two feet from the coastal jurisdiction line and seven feet from the seawall and tidal wetlands. This project does not require a full coastal site plan review and cam application to the Planning and Zoning Commission as it is exempt under section one one eight dash one 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 zero of the Nor- of the City of Norwalk zoning regulations. However, adverse impacts on coastal resources should still be considered as part of this variance application. It is encouraged that the increase to impervious surface be minimal and any ground disturbance be as far from coastal resources as possible. Thank you for the opportunity to comment. If you have any questions regarding the above, please call or email.
Okay, will the representative for this item, please come forward, identify yourself and uh make a presentation?
Hi, um can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Great, my name's Andrew Kilborn and I'm joined by my husband Xander Simonek. And if it's okay with everyone, uh I can share my screen cuz we do have a presentation.
Please do.
Great. Can you see this?
Yes.
Yep. All right. So again, thank you um so much for giving us the opportunity to present our case. Uh we are the owners of nineteen Burwell Street and as noted, we are requesting a variance to position a new parking pad on the side of our property. Uh if you're not familiar with nineteen Burwell Street, it overlooks uh tidal marsh across from Harborview and now towards uh the Norwalk Channel. And it's truly a serene natural habitat and a place of great enjoyment for us and our families. In addition to nineteen Burwell, we also own eighteen and sixteen Burwell Street. And we're on a mission to revitalize what can only be described as a street that's falling into disrepair. Sadly, at least uh one home is in foreclosure, another one was recently condemned and demolished. And we are the only owner occupied residents on the street and we have committed a lot of time, money and resources to significantly improve our homes, particularly nineteen Burwell Street. Nearly every other house on Burwell Street is made up of multifamily homes, which means that there's overcrowding in terms of vehicles parked on the street, which translates to three-point turns pulling out of our driveways and delicate maneuvering between vehicles to exit the street. And I mentioned the multifamily housing uh because it really provides a lot of congestion on the street. And it it is quite unsightly to actually look at all the cars. And I invite you to um, if you're around this weekend, you can drive by seventeen Burwell where the in-house mechanic regularly um works on vehicles directly on the street, so it's a bit of a nuisance. Uh some of the homes are conforming to the parking setback rules and others are not. So why are we here today? We're here to request a twenty one foot variance and um Danielle, I think you said a nine point five differential, but it it should be ninety. Um so it's a twenty one foot variance for the new parking pad by extending the current paved entrance. And due to the topography, a large portion of the property beyond the thirty foot setback floods during lunar tides and storm surges. Salt water from the pooling areas would significantly damage our vehicles and prevent us from moving our vehicles during a flood. We've explored alternative areas further back within our property lines, however, uh this would potentially require driving through floodwaters for street access. And conforming to the thirty foot setback rule would mean positioning the driveway across our lawn, which would significantly disturb the natural beauty of the location and it could have a negative impact on the value of our property. So our proposal, our proposed parking location is situated at a higher elevation in an area furthest from the area that floods and outside the coastal jurisdiction line, and it remains dry during lunar tides and storm surges. There's an existing paved entrance to the property outside of the coastal jurisdiction line that's been in use for at least fifty years. We are requesting continued use of the driveway to enter the property. Uh there is a utility pole and an anchor wire from um on the curb that extends from the side of the house to just outside the existing entry, which limits alternative locations to enter the property. And the street extends past the driveway inside the coastal jurisdiction line. And since there's an influx of vehicles using the existing driveway to turn around as it's a dead end street. Uh it is a necessary evil, I should say, to have that entrance where it is. Uh because without that driveway entrance in that location, vehicles are most likely to disrupt the coastal resources by driving onto the wetlands. And here you can see some visuals of uh the flooding that I mentioned. This is just a a random photo that we were able to capture, but it it tends to flood more. Uh on the, that's the photo on the left, obviously, and then on the right, on the top, you can see the uh utility pole and the anchor wire. And on the bottom right, you can see the street that extends past the driveway as I mentioned. And this, uh these photos here, uh the one on the left is the current and proposed uh driveway entrance. And on the right is the proposed parking area uh within the um the twenty one feet uh variance request. And I just provided a few more images when I mentioned the natural beauty of the area, having a driveway cross through the property to meet the thirty foot setback line would really disrupt this beautiful location, this oasis um that we own on the street and you can just see multiple views both ways of the property. And then I I did share this and I know it was mentioned uh about the nineteen seventy eight topographical map that's used to determine the locations for existing driveways, et cetera. So although driveway is not a use uh or is a use and not a structure as noted by the zoning department. Um the driveway and parking area off-street has been in use for at least fifty years. Um we could probably assume longer. Uh we have this uh visual on the left, that's an aerial shot from nineteen seventy five provided by Keystone Aerial and then the current view on the right. Uh so you can see um probably more clearly on the right uh the extension of the road past the driveway uh where it's a very limited turning radius to actually turn around. Uh and you know, we're we're simply asking to continue to use this space as it's been used for decades. Um and if if we hadn't uh requested the and been given the permits to improve the house, we would have just used the driveway as it is, as it's been used for all these years without any consequence. Uh but we follow the rules and we're here today to request the variance. For the design plan, um the plan calls for the least amount of space per square foot and allows for two parking spaces and proper turn radius. And I mentioned that again, uh we wanna avoid three-point turns pulling out of the driveway because of because of the congestion. Uh and I think that's an important point, um because there are so many cars parked there. The existing paved area will be resurfaced and continue to serve as the apron for the entrance as to limit further disturbance to the coastal area. And pea gravel or Jersey shore gravel versus asphalt will will serve as a substrate for the driveway and the parking pad to allow for passive water drainage and minimal expansion of an impervious surface area. This plan limits any disturbance to the coastal resources and is is confined within a reasonable distance in the coastal jurisdiction line. And here you can see uh a uh detailed um map um with the proposed plan drawn up by a licensed surveyor. And I'm gonna skip ahead quickly and I can come back to this, but you could just see here a more detailed view of the proposed plan on the property. So on the right, you can see uh the existing asphalt apron, the existing gravel driveway and then the proposed driveway extension so that we can safely park two cars and have the proper turn radius to turn around on our property to exit. So again, I'll come back to that. Uh I did wanna just show a couple of visualizations. These are not to scale, they're just really concept, so you can get a sense of what we're trying to do. Um I apologize for our crude attempt at renderings, although they're they're kinda cute. And you here's just another view of that. And in conclusion, we're very conscientious of protecting the coastal resources and the natural beauty of the area. It's the main reason why we chose to purchase three homes at the end of Burwell Street. And in actuality, we strongly believe that our plan protects the coastal resources by removing the need for vehicles to turn around in the wetlands at the end of the street. And if approved, the variance will allow us to safely park two cars on our property, as I said, avoiding potential flooding. And parking on our property versus the street will lessen the effects of the already overcrowded Burwell Street. So we ask you to please allow us to continue to restore nineteen Burwell to its original glory and uh have continued enjoyment of this waterfront oasis. And with that, we thank you for your consideration.
Could you put back up the uh survey?
Sure, do you want the full one or this one?
No, that one is perfect.
Okay.
Okay. So you've made no effort to push the parking areas any further inward on the property, have you?
Again, um because of flooding, we're avoiding where it pools during um storm surges and lunar tide. So protecting um our property from potential damage. That's why we chose the location where it is proposed on the map.
Okay. Any other questions from board members?
Yeah, I've got one. Um so you said that you're keeping the existing asphalt apron basically to minimize the extent of construction that you'll have to do. Is that correct?
Yeah, to minimize disturbance to the the land, basically.
Okay.
It's in, it's in good condition and I assume that at some point when the street was paved, it was paved at the same time.
Makes sense. Um I saw the, yeah, the image of the the utility pole and the anchor wire and it looks like you've got about like, I don't know, maybe eight to ten feet between the the edge of the apron and that that anchor wire, like, do you have a figure for how much distance that is?
Um it's approximately seven feet. Um we've got um mature shrubs that have been there for probably thirty plus years. Um and again, the the existing apron and gravel driveway that would have to be removed, there's potential disturbance that could um come from that. It's perfectly in good use and it's outside of the coastal jurisdiction line. That's why we're requesting to continued use of that space.
So as I look at it, any number of your, any number of your neighbors are using this as a turnaround, right? When you get to the end of the block, you're the only game in town, right? Your driveway, the turnaround.
That's correct.
So you're gonna save people from going to the extreme of going to the end of the block, which which would be really, I mean, up against the water, so so this will be even more appetizing now that you you do it, but I guess. I but I coming down there, I could see it was very, very crowded and uh very limited ability to maneuver around there.
Yeah.
Any further questions from the board?
Just so it's clear to me, are we talking semi-permeable when you get away from the asphalt area?
Can you describe what that means so I understand?
Uh means that the water can soak down into the ground.
Yes.
Yeah, Andy, they're proposing that the new driveway be all pea gravel.
All right, I don't think that's necessarily semi-permeable. It depends on how compact it gets.
It's more more permeable than asphalt.
Um I was at the property some years ago, there were some issues there. How long of uh has has it been owned with the current owner?
Since September first.
Did you find the property in good care when you got it?
We uh are doing renovations because we needed to do some improvements to the house. So it it needed um some TLC and we're in the process of actually doing that now.
Cuz when I visited, it was not in good shape. It was pretty, pretty bad. And it had been um stormy and raining and the lower side of your lot was quite muddy.
I can't speak to that cuz I I. I can't speak to that because I I obviously wasn't there, but it the the ground is is pretty solid um in the front. Um, I showed the image. Um, I mean, you can see these photos. Um, this is the proposed area. I think that there's at some some gravel that's there above the um the asphalt. Um, and I think that pro- the proposal that we have will ensure that this area is well-maintained. It will look nice and it will protect um the coastal resources from potential damage so that people aren't backing up into it.
Yeah.
Will this house have to be raised in soon?
No.
Okay.
Just curious, are the, are two of the properties you bought contiguous to this home or they're not?
They're across the street.
Across the street.
So um, it's eighteen Burwell and it's sixteen Burwell. Didn't want to go as so far as to asking the street to end earlier than um where it is now so that we could put a gate up, but um, I'm just kidding. It's it's they're they're across the street. I mean, nineteen Burwell is really special. The views are incredible. The wildlife there is great. And that's why we bought it again, so that we can ensure that the property is restored to the way that it should be. Um, as I said, also, we're the only owner resident, owner occupied residence on the street. Uh, the rest are multifamily homes with uh renters.
And you'll and you'll continue to be so?
Yes.
I don't have any further questions. Anything else from the board?
Okay.
Nope.
Um.
Just as a quick note, I went to the end of the street in Google Maps and uh twirled it around, so we're looking across the street. And there's a driveway that's not unlike the driveway they're proposing, and it is full of water and mud. So I'm so in the past, when I was on the DPW committee, we're authorizing some things on that street. And there was a drainage issue. So I think anything that you put in, you want to make sure it will drain well.
I can just speak to the property that you're mentioning we own. That's eighteen Burwell Street, I I believe you're speaking about.
Yeah.
And uh, we plan to uh re-surf- not resurface, but um, what's it called? Standard speaker, the, you know, um, make it, it's, there's a lot of indentations um from lack of um maintenance. Yeah, so that's our next step. We have our hands full with restoring nineteen Burwell, which is our priority. Um, but that is something that we plan to do.
And you know that you do get water up on your lawn on a fairly frequent basis.
Yes, um, but because of the topography, it really is the center of the property and the southern portion that uh floods. So the area again that we I identified as the location remains dry, and we've been obviously watching this and living through storms over the last uh year, because we've been in this area at eighteen um since uh s- October of last year. So we have a direct view of nineteen Burwell from there, and that area does remain dry.
So I think a challenge for you uh is putting the driveways into the area you're suggesting is uh fine in my book. But I think you have to, for your own safety and the preservation of your property, you gotta make sure that there is a way for it to drain rather than to pool the water near the homes.
Mm-hmm. We appreciate that.
Yeah, I agree. It has to be a permeable paving. Um, I I asked about raising the the home because it is within the hundred-year flood line, so it may not be this project that starts to say, but is the ground floor elevation, I assume it is not above the floodline. And at some point, that house may need to be raised.
Yeah, um. I put currently to.
Sorry.
Sorry, we can't, we can't hear you. Unfortunately, you sound like a a robot. Um, it's it's at eleven feet, is it? I I think, or?
The flood zone, sorry, Andrew, the flood zone is eleven. The finished floor is at eleven point two, so that's not flood compliant, and there's a basement, so.
Yeah, but uh because of various um discussions with Tammy in the zoning department, it wasn't required to raise the house to do the work that that we're doing. Um, there is no known flooding um on the the main floor of the house um because of the elevation.
Yeah.
Do we have any member of the public that wishes to uh come forward?
So once again, you need to use the raise your hand feature if you'd like to speak regarding this item. If you've dialed in or if you've called in, you press star nine to raise your hand and star six to unmute. There's no raised hands.
Okay. Well, uh, Andrew, there's no need for rebuttal because there's nothing to rebut at this point, so uh we will close this portion of the public hearing. And uh we will be discussing this and voting at the end of the meeting, so stay tuned. Uh, item D on our agenda. Uh, again, Bell Island. So Danielle, if you would uh.
Sure. So twenty-three dash one two two one dash oh three, Bell Island LLC. Variance is four, front yard setback, house slash porch. Thirty feet slash thirty feet required, eighteen feet slash eleven point four feet proposed. Section one one eight dash three four zero C. Rear yard setback, left side slash right side. Eight point seven feet slash seven point seven three feet required. Three feet slash two feet proposed. Number of stories, two and a half maximum, three and a half proposed. Building lot area, thirty-five percent max, fifty percent proposed. And parking within the front setback, section one one eight dash one two two zero J. To construct a new flood compliant, single-family residence in B Residence Zone. Property located at twenty-three West Mir Avenue, District Six, Block thirty-three, Lot sixteen. Request: The applicant seeks several variances in order to build new flood-compliant, single-family dwelling. Background: The existing home was built in nineteen twenty and has existing non-conformities, including setbacks and undersized lot. No off-street parking is provided. Analysis and findings: Although the proposed dwelling is larger in scale than the existing home, the proposal would be consistent in size with other dwellings in the area. The plan includes off-street parking that would also require a variance approval. The small lot size and allowable building footprint appear to meet the criteria for zoning hardship. The coastal site plan review memo from Amelia Williams notes that no adverse impacts on coastal resources are anticipated in approving this variance application. Attachment one coastal site plan memo from Amelia Williams Land Use Planner. And I will read that memo. Upon review of our records and maps, it appears that the property at twenty-three West Mir Avenue is approximately a hundred and fifty feet from any coastal resources. No adva- adverse impacts on coastal resources or future water-dependent opportunities are anticipated with the approval of this application. Further, it appears that the project is consistent with the goals and policies of the Coastal Area Management Act. This project is exempt from the coastal site plan review under section one one eight dash one 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 zero of the City of Norwalk zoning regulations, as the single-family residence is more than a hundred feet away from any coastal resource areas. Thank you for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you, Danielle. Will the representative plea- for this item, please step forward, identify yourself, and make a presentation?
Um, I just wanted to point out, and Dan is going to remember to address this. I had noted in my email to to the board that the applicant did uh advise me of an error. The requirement to send the neighbor notification is ten days prior to the meeting, and they mailed it nine days prior to the meeting. However, we did receive numerous uh responses regarding this item.
Yes, we did.
So the board will need to decide if the notice requirement is, has been met.
Should we decide on that prior to hearing this?
Yes.
Well, uh, board members, we have a deficiency of one day's notice um on this. I can tell you from my printed-out letters of response to this application, uh, we have quite a number of responses. Uh, we do have letters from people uh in the neighborhood that are not direct abutters, but did complain about not being notified, which uh is something we can't that we can't take on because we only require that adjacent property owners be notified. So um, you know, I'll pull the board at this point to see how you feel about hearing this item with one-day deficiency uh on the notification of the abutting property owners. Uh, all those who feel that nine days uh notification is allowable or permissible, uh, and uh would you please signify by raising your hand?
Lee, question, was one of the letters that was complaining about it, the uh homeowners association?
Ah, boy.
Sorry.
No, that's what I thought. They they considered the homeowners association to be a neighbor, where in fact, that probably isn't a neighbor. It's just a an association.
Ah. I am trying to find that. And it's not easy because I've got
There's a lot.
There's a lot.
Yeah, I I think I had the over in the number of letters.
I actually do have a letter here from Carrie Fowler, co-president of Bell Island Improvement Association. Uh. And I'm looking. Uh, I don't see an objection about, oh, we, the Bell Island Improvement Association, were not informed. So there's some indication that at least the association was not aware of this.
They would not.
Uh, until recent.
And yes, they were not notified.
They wouldn't be. Sorry, they wouldn't be required to be notified. They own the passways that are adjacent to the property. Those passways do not have parcel IDs. If uh a pro- if the tax assessor is asked for an abutter's list, it would not include the pathway.
Okay.
I see nothing directly from the uh, the associations. So.
Now, you have another letter that's from a member of the association. He he lives up at the end of Yarmouth.
Yes, I do have that from the co-president.
As we got to, you got the co-president, and then you got another member.
Yes.
And I don't know if there's a third one or not, because I stopped reading at after eight letters, so.
Yes, thank you. Um. I mean, how does the board feel? I mean. Board members, speak up, please.
I'd like to see, I mean, if we took a lot of time into getting everything together, I'd like to see ten days as being, you know, part of the, part of the presentation.
I think if it's not ten days, then we ask them to come back in January.
Normally, I think one day wouldn't bother me, but since we have a lot of letters from people who are specifically complaining about their having not been enough notice, I think before we go forward, it should all be, you know, completely by the book and be at least ten days.
Tammy, I read up through eight. In the last ten or eleven, whatever the hell the number ended up being, were there uh adjoining owners or representatives of the owners who had sent in any message to us or or not? Because only one had done so.
Yeah, we had twenty-nine Yarmouth. We had.
No, I read, I went through them, but I'm just talking the abutting.
Yeah, yeah, these are the most, oh, yeah, I don't think the right, I think you're correct that the only true butter was seventeen Yarmouth.
Okay, I think that's an indication that not everybody is up to speed. And so I think holding off to January is well advised.
And Tammy, do you remember which letter that was? It was seventeen Yarmouth. I was just digging through my inbox, and I I swear I read through them all. I couldn't find that one in particular.
Actually, I think came from, the objection came from attorney Amy.
Yeah.
Oh, it was the one with the PDF attachment.
Yeah, it was a two-page, a two-page note.
Yeah, A- Amy Zabatakas on behalf of Jonathan Agnew at seventeen Yarmouth.
Ah. Yes.
So just to clarify, if it sounds like we're going to have the applicant come back in January, they're gonna need to re-notice their four abutters, uh, the adjoining and across-the-street properties, more than ten days to be on the safe side.
And just to keep the world happy, they could also notify the Bell Island Improvement Association.
I would wholeheartedly agree with that, Andy. Um. So I'm I'm gonna make a motion that we uh put this off until our January meeting.
Yeah, second.
That I was gonna continue, but.
Oh, you're still going with the motion here. All right.
Well, yeah, I feel that uh all adjoining property owners uh should be re-notified uh along with the Bell Island Improvement Association. And I think that that will satisfy anybody in the neighborhood that may or may not be uh aware of this hearing tonight.
Yeah, just a word of caution. This is not the first time that there's been a lot of rejection of a proposal. It happens frequently in Bell Island. But one of the things that helps is doing a briefing. Whoever's doing the change to the home, doing a briefing for the neighborhood, and that helps a lot.
It it certainly does. I have made it a practice with my clients in such situations that an informal get-together uh is quite helpful.
Yep.
Okay, shall we, Andy, second my motion? All those in favor of uh moving this or continuing this to Jan- excuse me, January, uh, please raise your hands. I believe we're unanimous.
Okay. I don't know if you can hear me. Thank you.
Hey.
You're welcome.
Okay. Shall we return to item working in reverse our order, item two three dash one two two one dash oh two uh eight nineteen Burwell Street. Um. Discussion amongst the board members on this.
I'll start.
I'm not real thrilled with the amount of paving, but at the same time, I think we ought to recommend strongly that they use permeable pavement.
Can we make that a condition of approval?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, I would like to.
I think it's a good idea.
Maintain that.
I admit I was a a little skeptical of this application when I had just read it before the meeting, um, but. Um, but I think that using a permeable surface would put a lot of my concerns to rest. So as long as we specify that, um, I'm, I'm good with it as proposed.
Okay, I have, I have no objection to the location of the parking pad. I don't particularly see it as oversized for two vehicles. I think they've provided ample turnaround space. Um, and I'm certain somebody is gonna, in the neighborhood, is gonna be constantly using their driveway to turn around. I don't think we can do anything to uh, uh, you know, forestall that. But uh, you know, I have no issues uh on this item.
So, are you making a motion, Lee, or am I?
I didn't make a motion. I was just waiting if anybody else had comments.
No.
Well, let me make a motion, so you can make more comments, you know, after we make the motion.
Yes.
I'm gonna move that we approve it as presented with one caveat, and that is that the additional paving beyond what is there currently be permeable.
I'll second that.
I agree. All in favor of the this motion, raise your hand. It is unanimous. We approve.
Thank you.
You're very welcome and good luck with your projects.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, the second item we will vote on is two-three dash one-two-two-one dash zero-one thirteen Longview Court. Comments?
Yeah, I still am confused about, because the paperwork I have basically talks about the separation rather than the merging of the two, and all the rest of it came just through discussion. So I don't know, I'm missing something.
Well, do, do we first have to decide if we want to approve the separation of the lots? Is that?
Seems to me the right thing to do, but.
Well, I, that's, that's where I was gonna suggest we uh, we start is do we want to permit the separation of these two lots? Which would, in theory, uh, permit the construction of a uh, a single family residence in the future at eleven Longview Court.
I mean, my take was, I think you could, I think you should add the area back to the, the two-family home. And then, you know, we can provide the variance for the sixteen feet. I mean, that was kind of my take, so it's a little bit of each.
I, I would agree that making thirteen legal in terms of lot area uh might go a long way in the future. Uh, should they need to do something with that property? That would be my first recommendation is, you know, slice off a portion of eleven and give it to thirteen.
Yeah.
And with that, I would feel more comfortable about allowing or granting the variance for uh, you know, front yard width.
I agree.
The, I will tell you, the one big objection I have is that this lot is gonna feel like one paved parking lot.
Yeah, I agree.
I mean, that's why I, that's why I asked about landscaping, because there are almost no area to plant in when they're done, especially along the driveway in the parking area.
Mm-hmm.
That's where I have my big objection.
Yeah, Ben?
I, I am kind of on our permeable paver kick or pavement kick, though.
Yeah, I was gonna ask Tammy if in the new code, it's going to require permeable paving.
I don't know what i- if, correct, so we will be calculating in the new code. There is a requirement in residential zones as well to not exceed impervious surface. I don't know what those uh percent coverages are, but I, you know.
Well, when you end up with a lot of coverage, which is happening here, if we approve it, the need for impermeable, um, or permeable, rather, not impermeable, permeable surface is uh readily apparent. And I know that kicking around the common council and kicking around the zoning board for years, there's been discussions of requiring it. But I don't know if anybody ever figured out what they want to require and when.
I would also note that the, uh, what is it, like, the west side of that property on the survey is like, you can see the grading, it's like pretty sloped, so, you know, all that runoff of a asphalt surface would just down the hill.
So I, I don't know if I was clear. It, if you approved it as-is, or if it was an as-of-right, and they could go in, when you're adding in pervious surface, whether or less pervious surface, DPW requires a drainage report. So expanding driveways like that, whether it's gravel or pavement, they're gonna look for a drainage report and it maybe require uh Coltech some underground water uh retention.
And we require it as part of our approval, that a full engineering report on drainage uh be submitted for approval. Cause I think we should.
Why don't, why don't we ask that an effort be made, and, cause I don't know that we can demand it. An effort be made to use permeable surface so that there will be some betterment of the drainage. And that any other requirements be um from building or um land use be uh met. Cause I don't know what other ones there are out there. Public works, excuse me.
Um, you know, I, I know that code requires that all site runoff from roofs and parking be contained on the site. You can't, you can't allow anything from your site to drain onto a neighboring property.
But he's gonna, he's gonna drain onto.
Through a few of those.
I mean.
The problem is you end up with them arguing back and forth, and uh, then the city has to make the decision.
Especially on a hill.
I mean, it, it's like his property, thirteen is really not on it. It doesn't slope down like the, whatever he has in front of it. Could put some bushes in front of his home because the access is on the side of his home. So he could unify a bit up there, and it might, it might hold some water there. But it doesn't precipitously drop, I think, until you start to get close to the other property line. But there's not a lot of room up there, and it's the end of a dead-end street. It's just, you know, it is what it is, there's pavement.
Well, I know. And that's why it bothers me that this site has so much paving on it, be it pervious or impervious.
Well, if you, if you look at the other homes running up to it, it's, it's, it's kind of, there's a lot of disarray there, so I'm hoping.
Oh, yeah, no, it's, it's a very confused neighborhood.
Yeah.
So, I mean, far as I'm concerned, I, I would say, uh, and I'm not making a motion yet, that any approval we give, I'd like to see a review of drainage by DPW. As part of this, but I will definitely agree with Andy that we need to require a pervious surface for all paving on the site.
Yeah, permeable.
Permeable, now. I got it, Andy.
Okay. Anyhow, I'm gonna stay out of this motion. I'm not getting in touch with it with a telephone call.
Would somebody like to make a motion? Hearing none, I'll make one. I would uh, uh, my motion is to recommend that the, uh, first, that the the deficient site area for um eleven, for thirteen Longview be uh carved off of eleven Longview, giving the site a total of not less than six thousand square feet. Uh, and that with that being done, we grant the variance for the deficient front yard width. In addition, I'd like to require that all paving on the site be, uh, Andy, your word, pervious, permeable, when it's pervious.
Yeah, we don't want it impervious.
Yeah, definitely don't want it impervious.
Yeah.
That it be um, uh, permeable surface. Uh, and that um, a drainage report be submitted to DPW for their review and comment.
I'll second that.
Who seconded, Ben?
All Bens.
Yeah. Okay, all in favor of approving this item, signify by raising your hand. Okay, you, we have a unanimous approval on this.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Okay, um, we've got minutes. Have people read through the minutes? And does anybody have any issues?
No.
Okay, uh, I make a motion, we approve the uh minutes from our November meeting. Uh, all signify by raising your hands.
Do we have to second that?
Thank you, Ben.
I'll second that.
You did. Okay, unanimously approved are the minutes. Uh, do we have any other order of business?
Yes, we have the meeting calendar.
Oh, yes, we do. Uh, Tammy asked me to review the calendar for any uh conflict with the Jewish holidays. I have found none. Does anybody else have any issues with our meeting days over the coming year?
Nope.
I'm happy with it.
Okay, uh, the only thing I will add is I will not be at the February meeting. So Danielle, you get to be chairman. So practice.
That's okay. Who wants to read then? Wait, let's do all the West Mirror.
You'd be out there all on your own.
Yeah.
Been there, done that, and I know Andy has to, so, uh, very well, um. Uh, I look forward to coming.
It's with Tammy. Tammy, would you call the mayor's office? I don't know how long it's gonna take Marilyn to get a letter in and tell him the letter's coming. And try to get him moving. We would like to replace her in kind, if you know what I mean.
Yep, um, and then we need to get a motion on calendar, please, and a vote.
Oh, will that be seven, will those meetings be seven PM now?
That's correct. The, the proposal is that they be at seven, they begin at seven.
Yes, that is on. That is. So we're all Zoom for next year again.
And I think we already approved the seven o'clock thing, so.
Yes, we did. I'll make a motion, we approve the uh calendar dates for meetings in twenty twenty-four.
Yeah, I second that.
Okay.
I'm, I'm there.
We're good. Well, um, I want to wish everyone happy holidays. Uh, we've had a pretty good year, uh, not too many fights, arguments, or uh, uh, fisticuffs. Cause that comes from us being Zoom meeting.
I don't know if I can promise that, because we're going to DC for a week. So if any hot, you know, carjack folks come to my car, I might get into fisticuffs.
Okay, that's just fine. I will be in Washington the end of February.
That sounds good.
Okay, everyone.
Thank you. Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Do, do we move to adjourn?
Oh, yes.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll move to adjourn.
Great.
I'll second.
Hey.
We are officially adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Happy holidays.